Good evening, welcome everybody to today's Environment Meeting. Congratulations to everybody and welcome to those of you that have not been here previously to our first Environment Meeting on the, I don't know, it's not an academic year, our councillors' years?
Beautiful.
Is it useful?
Beautiful year.
Thank you.
I think it's the island.
It's a bull.
Yes, I like it. Moving on, do we have any apologies for absence?
I've had apologies this evening from councillors, Mrs Mossam, Mossam, Widowsen and Edwards.
Anybody else? Thank you. To receive members' interests, anybody to declare anything over? Moving on to item number three. Minutes of the Environment Committee meeting to receive and confirm the minutes of the proceedings of the Environment Committee meeting held on the 30th of March is a true and correct record. Do I have a proposer? Thank you, councillor.
I was here. I can't, I know I wasn't, I know you weren't.
And how's the brass orders?
It's pressing, sir.
Happy to second them, thank you.
Yes.
All those in paper? Thank you, that's fine. Yeah, I think you can still raise your hand, I believe. Any against? No, that's fine. Moving on to agenda item four, to receive an update from the Climate Change Working Group. And as Hazel's here, Hazel, would you?
Hello.
Or would councillor Wilson?
I was going to say, we were due to have a meeting, but there weren't many that came, so we've got a meeting scheduled next week.
13th, I believe it is.
That's fine, we can roll that over to the next meeting then.
Please, yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to agenda item five, hanging baskets, to receive an update from councillor Brosard.
Fine, thank you very much for that. In terms of an update really, I think it's just to provide those who maybe weren't at the previous, haven't attended previous Environment, just to give a very brief overview. I was tasked with looking at the opportunity to provide hanging baskets throughout Sandhurst. From that, my initial impression was that the most advantageous locations would be using the lampposts that we've got, because they're strategically positioned on the main roads, the secondary roads, et cetera, et cetera. I then consequently contacted someone who I knew at Bracknell Forest Council, a person called Osman Ferreira, who is responsible for lighting. When I explained our aspiration of having Dalgill hanging baskets from their lampposts, he said that he could not approve that. And the reason is that lampposts apparently, in his opinion, are not sufficiently sturdy to take the weight of the hanging baskets, probably particularly when they're wet and they absorb a lot of water. What he did suggest, and this is very much Captain Hadd, that we could, that the poles that are required throughout Sandhurst, those that we designate, could be replaced by heavy-duty versions at our cost. Need to say, the budget would not stretch to that. So I then looked at other alternatives, and what I was proposing in two locations, Little Sandhurst at Mill Shopping Parade, and also Alsmore outside the community centre, to have what is known as a flower tower. That's the one that is used in Crowthorn, that you might have seen, and I think are actually quite attractive. And we've got a company who, based in Slough, would be responsible for the installation and the maintenance, the maintenance being replacing any dead flowers and watering them on a regular basis to ensure that they will remain healthy, as they do in fact in Crowthorn. There are two requirements that go with this. One of them is that it must be confirmed that Highways will authorise the location of the Mill Shopping Parade and also outside Alsmore Community Centre. I have received that in writing, so that is one tick. The other part is the land registry, to ensure that we actually own the land on which we will be putting the flower towers. I've been in touch with a person called, who's within the lease department or the land registry department, I'll add his name in a moment, he's confirmed that what he requires is a Google Earth map. I've provided that to him, to identify the very precise location where the flower towers will go. If it is confirmed that we own the land, Highways have already authorised it, what I'd like to secure the agreement of the committee tonight is that, subject to those two criteria being met and submitted to the executive officer, the executive officer can, with your permission, place an order for the two tower baskets, rather than defer it by another two months for our next committee meeting. So we will be entrusting the executive officer with, shall we say, policing the process, ensuring that this is compliant, and then placing the order on the company in Slough. That is one part of it. So I don't know if it's appropriate to cover that at this stage, or to roll in the second part of the submission that I'm going to make, because they are interconnected. All right, I'll roll them in. What we've got also within Sandhurst, you might have noticed, along the parade of central Sandhurst, from Greggs down to the Co-op, and from Collage Town, Thames Hospice, down to Aldi, there are metal posts, there are 11 metal posts, which are, if I just show you on the photograph that I've got, those are the posts. They were installed originally by Bracknell Forest Council about 20 years ago for their own hanging baskets. They installed them, they watered them, they changed any dead flowers for a number of years, subsequently they were removed. I understand the reason they were removed was on cost grounds, because of the need to count out the maintenance work and also the watering of those hanging baskets. I felt that it would be appropriate for us to have our own hanging baskets on those metal posts, of which there are 11. I've spent a lot of time writing to the Highways Officer, Gary Cleaver, to secure his agreement on it. Unfortunately, he has come back eventually and said that he cannot improve of it, because his view is that they have suffered corrosion. Despite the fact, and you won't see it, but there's a plastic cap on top to prevent any moisture entry, and in addition, the brackets that were secured by Bracknell were not drilled into the post, the abrasions on the paint show that there would have been clamps. However, we are not going to get permission to use those yellow posts. Plan B now is to have, within the budget that we have got, given that we can't have the hanging basket, the money can then be assigned to two flower tower baskets in central Sandhurst, as a location that I will determine, and two to be placed in Collage Town, in a location that I consider as appropriate, that doesn't interfere with pedestrian access, but also, most importantly, has a significant visual impact for the benefits of the community. Given that we're not going to have the hanging baskets, I'm very sorry about that, I have to say, I think it would have been a great enhancement, but we are where we are. So again, there will be a cost consideration, there will be the need for the Highways Authority to approve the four flower tower baskets in these two locations, of central Sandhurst and Collage Town. The land registry to also confirm that where they are located within the curtilage of our ownership, Bracknell Forest Council's ownership of the land. If that is agreed and submitted in writing to the executive officer, I would like the executive officer to be given permission by the committee for the order to be placed by the executive officer on the company in Slough, for them to install those four flower towers, in addition to the two that are already proposed. So that will be six that will be supported, if it is agreed by the committee tonight. Thank you.
Questions? Yeah, the company that you've said in Slough, is that the same company that does for Crowthorn?
And Camberley, and Hart, and Hartle Whitney. They are the only company. We were asked to look at other companies to ensure that we were getting value for money, but this is very much a niche market. You can go on to Google, lots of companies, you can either collect hanging baskets, or you can, they will deliver them, but they will not provide a turnkey provision of installation, replacing dead flowers and watering on a regular basis. So we've gone with that company, because ultimately Crowthorn were happy with it, and that is the evidence, I think, of an attractive design. Hazel?
What's the price difference between the hanging baskets that we were going to put on the poles, 11, and the four towers? Is there a price difference?
It comes, it's a little bit, it comes about another £50, over and above. The hanging baskets will be cheaper, because all they've got to do basically is put the clamp on, hang the hanging basket. This involves a lot more work in terms of actually physically installing it. The costing is known, and I've been asked to submit it to the executive officer, but it will be within, the six flower tower baskets will be installation and maintenance for the net for the period from May to October. Within the budget that was agreed back last February.
That's what I'm asking, yeah.
It's been agreed. It doesn't go above the budget.
First, and then come back to your ground.
Councillor.
He did have your hand up?
Temporarily beyond, he seems off the question, he wasn't. So, one thing that's come out of this, we have 11 steel metal poles.
Six in central Sandhurst, five in Collage Town.
Sticking up like that, that are completely and utterly useless. And we can't do anything with them.
Because of alleged corrosion.
Because of alleged corrosion.
They won't be on site to discuss it, they declined.
So we can't even like, I don't know.
Get them removed?
Remove them or decorate them.
They're not our property.
They're not our property.
No, we can't, we can't touch them.
Okay, very interesting. I personally, I prefer the flower tower, as you call it, to hanging baskets anyway.
Double hanging, it's a personal choice, frankly, we are where we are.
But one thing to consider, you know, if you're putting it along that Greggs Parade or where it is, because everything I'm thinking of is if people are there late at night and it's dark and they could fall over.
Just take the risk.
Do you know what I mean?
It's quite substantial.
I know, I know it's substantial, but I'm thinking someone coming out of village.
I think Crowthorn does have public houses, they do have people late at night, and I have to say, when I drive past on Saturday mornings, and there are five or six of them that I see, none of them suffer vandalism. So I love them.
They look great, they look great, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
I think they look fantastic.
It's a compromise, but we have to accept that, you know, we're not going to get what we want, despite all our best endeavours, and if anyone is suffering from insomnia, that's the file.
I prefer that, hanging baskets, I'm pretty sure.
Well, but it's always not actually voting, because we don't have a choice.
I was going to say, I'm happy to propose it, but subject to, is that okay with you? Just to give you the final.
Well, it's normal procedure, I would place an order anyway. Yeah, it's just, it's only coming back, because obviously the whole spec has now changed. And if we wait to get the quotes and bring it back to the here again, we rely, and we've then not got any powers at all this season.
No, I think it's, it's, sorry. I was just going to say, is there any benefit to putting the order in for the two that we do have the positioning approved?
We don't have any confirmation of land registry for any of them.
So we're not ready to go anyway.
Right. This might sound like a silly question, but would we obviously have choice over the colours of the flowers in there?
Yeah, no, it's just, blue is a nice colour.
You can do a colour chart after, and you then start picking the colours.
You can have that conversation. My, I'll release through that folder, Graham, I'm sure that office will come back.
How many blue flowers?
Purple. See, and this is awful.
I was being facetious.
I know, I know. I could be.
Subjects and conditions that.
Thank you.
You've laid out.
Just one last question, has the window of opportunity of having the flowers on display, will that still exist? I'm not somebody with green fingers.
Well, that's why I thought of answering ordering.
So it's, yeah.
It's got to be done before the end of May, hasn't it?
Yeah.
Won't they be able to have it up by then, that's the point. Councillor Allen?
Can I suggest that we set a deadline for this year to the end of May? And if it's not done by, you know, if we haven't got all the information we needed for all the sites by the end of May, then third to next.
I don't have.
That's good.
But I think as part of the motion for agreeing that it be, you know, delegated to us, should we get the information, we should set the deadline of the 31st of May.
Yeah, I'll agree with that. Yep, okay.
So do we have a proposer?
Yeah, I'll propose that, if you want to.
Thank you, councillor Allen. Yes, can we have a show of hands to those in favour?
Unfortunately, Chris, you're not able to vote on that, because you weren't here for the whole discussion.
Okay, moving on to agenda item six, bin request, to receive an update from councillors following the investigation. Am I handing that over to, if I miss the last meeting?
Oh, yes, yeah, very, very, agenda item seven.
Six.
Six, sorry, it was six. He brought in two of these. It was.
It's the investigation.
Sorry, bits, that's how I did it. Item seven.
Okay, it's fine, it's the.
You're looking at the minutes.
You're looking at the minutes.
Looking at the minutes, not the agenda, that's fine.
Oh, all right, thanks.
Yeah, so it was you basically, you said.
It's an update on the bin request, Michael.
All right, okay then, yeah, okay. I met with residents, we, this is what we're talking about, isn't it? I met with residents a couple of weeks ago, we walked the path all the way through to the Wokingham Road. In that time, we didn't find a single element of dog poo or a single dog poo bag. We did find a small amount of litter. The residents' aspiration is to have a bin positioned close to the Wokingham Road, so those people who walk from the bin that is Maybrook Close and carry their dog poo will then have a receptacle at the end. Given that there was very, there was no dog litter, I have grave reservations at expending the cost of a metal bin installed, where ultimately it can't be shown that it's a viable proposition. The residents have continued to come back to me, he said that apparently in a recent dog walk, he picked up six bags of dog poo. That seems to be in a week, and I think ultimately, it, I know that he would want a bin, but these bins are not cheap. And I think they can only be justified if there is a sufficient volume of dog poo to then allow the borough to empty it on, let's say, a weekly basis. So that's where we are. It's, I've said that I would walk, I would walk that path myself and just do an independent inspection of the level of dog poo, but there is a large bin at the entrance to the footpath, and that is well used. And I think what will happen is that some people walk that way and then walk back again, and they do carry their dog poo with them, mostly.
Yeah. You're almost having Adam and the stuff, no, they're all there.
Having a bin, we, it's the people.
Bin.
Listen, buy the bin.
Yeah, I've seen it, don't worry. Is the bin at Maybrook Close emptied regularly?
Yes.
So that's not been one of the complaints?
No, 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 it's a borrow one, and it, you could see.
Customer services.
It was.
My email.
It was, it was.
God, it's that bloody woman again. For the simple reason that I take pictures of full bins and send it to them.
Councillor Ives?
Yeah, Michael, where exactly was this? Amanda Maybrook Road is Wokingham Road, isn't it?
Yes, it is through to it, yes. In fact, it's opposite, the way he wants the bin positioned is in Albarrow Road. Up the Wokingham Road, on the left-hand side, on the right-hand side, there's the exit of the woods, and there's also that bridge that goes to the railway line.
One they've just opened a couple of years ago, yeah.
Like Councillor Wellington, yeah?
Yes, but you see, there is a bin already, where, next where he lives, and as we discussed, that bin issues, okay, it was about a quarter full, but it hadn't been emptied, because I think it was the day after, the Easter Monday that I met him.
So I've never seen that one over.
I don't think we can justify it on cost grounds.
I think it's £500.
Yeah.
And then, of course, the criticism would be, you know, why's all this money being spent on a bin that's not being used?
And it's not just the initial cost, which I think is more than £500, although it's £800.
The anomaly, yeah.
And then you've got the annual cost of having it emptied.
Yes, yeah, I think on cost grounds, I would.
I can't, the resident did define it as justified, it's already been there, and it has been used.
So what do you propose, Michael?
I propose that I continue, we continue to monitor the situation on a regular basis, and should there be a significant increase in the level of dog poo or dog poo bags, then I will bring it back to the committee for review in the future.
That's fine, I'm happy to second that. Show of hand, those in favour? Thank you, everybody.
Can I just, we just need to have, though, a fact that we're not doing it at the moment?
I'm complying on cost reasons, I will, we'll observe.
Can't be justified.
Yeah.
Thank you, councillor Allen.
So was that Eno, the misdecision?
It was, yes. Okay, moving on to agenda item seven, outside bodies reports, to receive reports from peer representatives on outside bodies, and then to assign councillors to positions on outside models. Has anybody been to any of those groups, associations, liked feedback? Take that as no. Let's just quickly work through them, then. Currently, Organisation One, Blackwater Valley Recreation and countryside management committee, we did have councillor Dr Forster, councillor Mrs Hill, and I'm on it also. Is councillor Forster still on?
He's happy to stay.
Is she still in the environment?
She doesn't have to be on.
Okay. That's it, this was everyone.
Yeah, I'm happy to continue, I've done it for probably about five years now.
That's fine, that can stay unchanged. Moving on to the Banister charity, we have councillor Mrs Jean Bettison, councillor Graham Birch, and councillor Paul Widowsen.
I think Jean's coming off there.
Jean was just stepped down.
Yeah, that's what I understood.
Well.
And I told them to take her place.
Anybody else? Any other suggestions or nominations? No? That's fine, so councillor Jean Bettison would be replaced with councillor Diane Wilson, thank you. The Black Bush Airport Consultative Committee, councillor Nick Allen, councillor Dale Birch, and councillor Mike Butcher is a sub.
Do you think there needs to be any change on that?
Sure.
Happy to go on to that one.
Is there a minimum, maximum?
I think it's only three people, which is why the third one's a sub.
A sub, yeah. Okay, we'll leave it as it is then, councillor Coppins. Okay, and then next one, Bracknell Forest Town Parish Council Liaison. Again, we have councillor Mrs Bettison and councillor Chris Ives.
I think, interesting, because I didn't think that I had, and I've never seen.
They've never had a meet.
They don't meet very often.
Yeah, we do, we have each other, they're called.
I'll keep quiet then, there must be something else, but Jean said they'd never meet.
Councillor Birch has asked to go on it.
Graham, was I?
Definitely not me. I thought they didn't even meet. Question to Jean Bettison.
I didn't, firstly, I didn't think I was, I was a representative in that one, but I'll stand corrected. But I've never seen an agenda from that group, so if it's meeting quarterly, how do I get myself?
I will re-notify them, all of these will be re- notified who their representatives are.
That's sound.
Make sure that happens, if you, if you want to go on it.
Happy to do that, yeah.
I think Dale.
I think Dale.
Dale wanted to go on that one, so he will put his name forward.
Okay, anybody else?
Might as well, so say for instance, if someone here wants to go on that, but then the other committees need to meet and talk about this, so they, or is it the moment that goes all there?
So this will be sorted out tonight for everything. We did say, or Paul Widowsen did say in the town council meeting, that anybody that was interested in volunteering for any of these, because this was a paper in the town council meeting, and the comment was made that anyone wanting to put their names forward that wasn't on the Environment Committee needed to let me know, and nobody has. We see some of them have gone to the various groups, and you know who's passed those messages on.
Okay. Sandhurst Day Centre, currently we have councillor Diane Wilson and councillor Jean Bettison.
I am now a trustee of the Day Centre.
Okay.
Can I do both? I'm quite happy to do both.
Right, councillor Allen proposed himself to continue to be on the Day Centre.
Right.
I'm happy to be honest.
Right.
We need another.
It's not anything.
Jean's going to be on it, it's got to.
We've got to.
Jean isn't going to be on it, right?
He's coming off, everyone.
Okay, so thank you. So for the Day Centre, we now have councillor Allen and councillor Mrs Coppins, thank you. Moving on to the Alsmore Centre, currently we have councillor Mr and Mrs Mossam. Is there to be a change on that?
They both wish to stay on that, so.
Oh, did they?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, hang on.
I thought, I thought they were.
I thought, I thought Mrs Mossam did, I thought Ray. No, Margaret indicated that she wanted to come off, and Hazel had offered.
Yeah, that's fine.
That was, you know, yes.
So it's me and Matt.
I'm looking weird, I suppose, I think it's.
You carry on.
Version one.
So Margaret's coming off, yeah. Replace Margaret, I've done that one before.
I want to stay on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we stand corrected, councillor Ray Mossam to remain, councillor Mrs Mossam to be removed and replaced with councillor Mrs Hazel Hill, thank you. And then the Clean Team.
This one is always either the Chair or Vice Chair of the Environment Committee.
We do have councillor Brosard.
Only one nomination, it's a surprise.
So that's just limited to you two? Yes, because it's to do with staff, so it's to do with Wendy and anything to do with the Clean Team, so that's.
Okay. So the Museum Trust, currently we have councillor Ives and councillor Edwards. Any changes?
Not that I'm aware of.
No?
Do that.
Okay. Then we have involved, again, I believe from what we've just heard, councillor Mrs Bettison would like to be removed, and then does councillor, Mr Mossam, would he like to stay on?
I understand so. And councillor Dale Birch, but no longer as a substitute.
Okay.
Can I volunteer as a sub then, please?
Of course you can. So currently we've got councillor Mossam, Mr, councillor.
It's only supposed to be two, is allowed to.
Fine, yeah, of course, thank you.
Which of them is?
And then councillor Darren Wilson is a sub. The Broadmoor Hospital redevelopment programme, currently we have councillor Ray Mossam and councillor Ben Hutchison. Any movement in that?
No, not more.
No?
Ben.
It's fine. The residents liaison, association liaison meetings, we do have.
Janice is about to join the committee, so it's not appropriate that she should be a.
Okay, thank you, so we'll remove Janice, from, again, what we've just heard, councillor Mrs Bettison will be removed. Right, Paul?
You need to remove both Jean and Paul.
Jean and Paul, thank you.
We can need to replace them.
Yeah, so currently we do have you on this.
Not with a meeting for years.
Sure.
No, that they, they did come to the meetings, they came to the ordinary meetings, they came to the level meetings.
Okay, so we've currently still got three, councillor Nicky Coppins, councillor Ives, councillor Dale Birch as a sub.
And myself.
Okay, so we'll have councillor Brosard back on there, on there, that still requires a further two.
So just to take Dale off as a sub, making them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councillor Dale Birch is a full, councillor Brosard on.
There doesn't have to be that many, it was just a case of that there is, was an unlimited number, so those were the ones that volunteered. Can I make a suggestion as well then, that we rename this, because the resident association liaison meetings, the majority of the associations that used to meet for the liaison no longer exist.
Correct.
So having spoken to Diane and Richard from the SRA, primarily, correct me if I'm wrong, please Diane, but these meetings have been pretty much SRA-led, haven't they?
Yes, in the case of, I mean, mostly Jean and Paul used to come along to just ordinary meetings, as did Janice. So it just made sense to carry on like that.
We just call them resident.
We just call it SRA.
SRA rep.
Yes.
Or just SRA liaison.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
I was thinking that none of the other smaller associations exist, like Collage Town Snack Rails.
Correct, correct, yeah.
That's not typical.
They sort of coughed along.
Right.
For a year or two, and then the College Meadows one was last, they did their planting effort, and then imploded.
Okay.
Snap Rails still has a sort of residual group that sort of chats, but doesn't do anything. Along Down Lodge is Soo Sullivan, occasionally comes along when she's not too busy. But that's it.
Right, okay, makes sense, calling it just the Sanders Residents Association Liaison.
Yeah.
Meeting.
And the next meeting's the twenty-second.
Thank you very much, um, uh, do we have anybody else that would like to join that? No, so it's fine as it stands then with those amendments.
Yeah.
So then moving on to Sanders Youth, we have. If you give me, well, it's in college, any changes on there? So I believe again councillor Paul Betterson will come up.
Yeah, Hazel Hill.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I'm not even sure it actually meets anymore, because it was down to the fact that Wellington College Land used to be part of Little Sandhurst, that is no longer the case. So I do not believe there's any actual reason for any Sanders councillors to meet with Wellington College anymore. So I think that's why we haven't been invited for the last three or four years.
Yeah, there's certainly been no, um, action at all during the last twelve months.
Since the boundary change two years ago, Wellington College is completely out of our areas, okay?
Two years, yeah, so few.
Thank you.
If we go, if we go back two years, I was the representative, and I didn't have any, any communication at all, because I, I did check with you, Ange, that it was correct.
Yeah.
Know that, that you had the contact. So we haven't heard anything.
Hmm, sure, seconded. Sanders Youth, currently councillor Ray Mossom and councillor Mrs Quigg. Any changes in there?
No, don't think we need it anymore, do we? We're not funding them anymore at the moment. Until we do, we probably don't need a, a rep on it.
Shall we leave the group as it stands, just in case in the future?
We can leave the names on.
Yeah, anything worth change, but I understand where you're going. Sanders Sports Club, so.
This again is the, um, this is a, um, position-led volunteer. So this is chair, vice-chair of leisure that attends these meetings.
That's fine, so that will be.
Because I, I volunteered for that last year and was declined on, on that basis, but I don't believe, uh, did you, did you go?
I've been regularly, yeah, I've been regularly, it's either me or Jean that have been, but we haven't done both, because otherwise it's a bit too many.
That should be.
There's no reason why we can't have a sub for that.
Well, shall we put Nikki down for it anyway? Because Jean's gonna, Jean's gonna come off, isn't she?
Your chair.
But Jean is vice.
Still going on it.
I'm on it, definitely, yeah, but there's two. But there's two, I'm just saying that there's a vice chair, which is Jean.
Yeah.
But if she's not gonna make.
Sorry, yes, because.
Shall we put Nikki down instead of Jean?
If Jean isn't there.
Okay, fine, yeah, it works.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I'll be there.
Graham, Hazel, and I've got Jean.
Oh, that's.
No, not Hazel.
Not Hazel. Hazel was before.
Yeah, it was before, thank you.
Okay, right, okay.
Moving on to footpaths.
Can we just have an overall proposal on that?
Yeah, sure. Um, without having to go through all of them, thank you very much, I'll second it, all those in favour? Thank you very much. When the footpath arrangements, did I listen to that?
Michael Brosard, Michael Brosard, Michael Brosard. She's something precious. This one by yours.
I can't remember who, who was on.
Oh, I, I've got the list.
Thank you.
You was on one and one A, and twenty. And OP one. Yeah, thank you. I don't know. I do remember them.
Oh.
Yes, because on the, on this bit, that, yeah, that's the.
Just that. So currently for footpath twelve in Alsmore, I believe we have you down, Diane.
Yeah, that's fine.
You happy with that?
Yeah, yeah.
Then footpath twenty-four, we currently have councillor Ives.
Yeah.
Happy with that, thank you. And moving on to College Town.
Nick Allen.
Nick Allen, Nick, we have you for three of the four.
Yeah.
You, you happy with that?
Yeah.
Thank you. And then.
John Edwards.
John Edwards was Branks Mill Road, I'm sure he won't mind as he lives on that road.
Yes.
Moving on to Central Sanders, so far no changes, arrange. So, Central Sandhurst.
Janice Souza.
Janice. And Janice again.
Me too.
So she's got the first two, I'm gonna propose the second and nominate her. I'm sure she won't mind in her absence.
No, she walks it anywhere, or runs it, whichever.
That's fine, and then.
Me. Footpath thirteen.
Councillor Brosard, and you're happy with that?
Yes, I am.
Perfect. And then moving on to Little Sandhurst, we've got.
Six, for me.
Councillor Brosard's on footpath six.
Mike Butcher for Scotland Hill.
Okay.
Might be worth trying to replace that one.
Yeah.
So Scotland Hill, any takers for a footpath? Nikki, thank you, councillor Coppins.
Okay.
Footpath.
For, proposed is Michael, he's happy with that again.
Footpath nine, Janice.
Yeah.
Footpath ten, Janice.
Yeah.
Footpath five, Ives.
Councillor Ives.
Yeah, fine.
Happy? And then finally, it says shops to Goff Meadows.
Nick Allen.
Councillor.
I don't mind doing that, I wanna lose some.
It's actually not in my rule, but, um, because it's actually, it's central Sanders.
Oh, yeah.
Councillor, um, Nikki has said she doesn't mind taking that on there, that's fine, thank you Nikki.
There's also chairman, a proposal, I have the communication, because I'm a member of the local countryside access forum. There's to be a designation of footpath twenty-nine, which is described as being, um, the northern boundary of eleven Peterhouse Close, Alsmore. There's the intention, subject to no objections, to a new footpath being created.
Where, from where Peterhouse? And this is Peterhouse goes.
How close, yeah, to where?
Well, it's, it's just Peterhouse, it doesn't go to anywhere.
It is a full path.
It's described as to have a public footpath along the northern boundary of eleven Peterhouse Close, Alsmore Sandhurst.
Ah, right, would you like a little bit of context?
Sure.
Peterhouse Close goes along the boundary with basically the RMA.
Yeah.
And there's a footpath there that goes from the main road, Braxton, up the hill, yes? Are you looking at a map? And it goes all the way down. If you go into that footpath and go all the way down, it comes all the way down to Yorktown Road, just opposite Oldie.
Okay.
Okay, now, during last year, both Ray and I were invited to look at somebody who had put a barrier halfway along there in order to prevent people walking along and disturbing the peace of somebody that was living there. Ray banged his head against a brick wall, I kept well out of it, because somebody said, well, councillor Mossom's been here, and I thought, go Ray. Um. Whether that barrier has been removed, I don't know. I'll send my son-in-law along to find out, because he's bigger than me. There were people moving, moving, it's memo. It's at the opposite oldie, at the side of Tyne Flawens, up there. Yeah, somewhere there, yeah. Because that's.
That's, that's fairly, that's actually, that, that path is FP one, which is fairly close to the Yorktown Road.
Yeah, yes, but it goes, it carries on up. There is a foot, there is a pathway, whether it's an official.
All the way up Peterhouse Close.
Yeah. All right.
Didn't know that.
Michael, why are they proposing that?
Because he was talking, he was talking about Peterhouse Close. Include it, but Peterhouse Close to where? You said Peterhouse Close to Peterhouse Close.
Well, it, it's quite a long close, and it runs the whole length, the whole length of Peterhouse Close.
Yeah, but if you, you were talking, yeah.
It's to the boundary of the RMA.
It's along the boundary of the RMA.
Diane, does this make any sense? This is what I've received from the local countries, that, that is described as that. It's not very clear, because it hasn't actually identified the roads themselves.
That's literally a short, short footpath through, through the houses.
Oh, that's completely different, because the footpath I'm talking about is the one that goes the length there.
Yeah.
This is a newly created footpath that hasn't existed.
That must be, because this is.
New build there.
No, no, uh. What's that? Say by number eleven?
Yes, it mentions that, northern boundary of eleven Peterhouse Close, Alsmore.
So it runs along the side of their house, and that's it.
And it is because they are the ones that put the barrier, I think.
Right.
There.
So the way I read it, it's, it already exists, but this is about it being, as being a right of way.
Yeah.
I'm not so sure this would even be one that would be one of our designated footpaths, because there are numerous small cut-throughs on estates and things that we don't monitor.
There's one by me that, yeah, I walk daily, but.
Okay.
Not designated.
And I think the, the only reason they're doing it, because if they make it a public right of way, then they can't block it.
Hmm, uh.
Sure.
And in Maywell, we, there's no maintenance required, if it's just a, an existing footpath, there's no vegetation.
Does it say eleven?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, eleven Peterhouse.
Yes, yeah, I've just Google mapped it, yeah, yeah.
It's quite a thin footpath, so I would imagine that, um, uh, you might get growth, so it's probably worth monitoring.
I'll send said son-in-law along with the dog.
Because literally, it'll, it'll probably, it, it's quite narrow, so I'd imagine it'd be cutting down, you know, the, the foliage.
I mean, the, the bit that goes along the footpath along.
Yeah.
With it, parallel with the RMA.
Okay.
That is overgrown, and you sort of fight your way out with secateurs in hand.
So does that fall under Alsmore, did we say?
Yes, it's described as a definitive map modification order for Sandhurst.
Yeah.
So it's, it's giving its own official status.
I think we'll have to add that into the Alsmore section.
Yeah, put me down for it, because I'll send Ian.
We need to defer though, because they have, was it forty-two days?
What's happened, it says here, the public consultation commenced on the thirtieth of April, and for the required forty-two days thereafter.
Okay.
So could we don't put that?
I suggest we bring this back when it's been designated a footpath.
If you want me to go.
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest, if someone has a look, and then we've got a.
It's a big footpath folder.
Good idea, yeah, sure. Okay, so.
Eight A as well.
Eight.
A. On the agenda. It must be information on existing footpaths, whether anyone had anything.
Okay, sorry, apologies, so to receive feedback on path conditions and actions taken from footpath monitor. Do we have any feedback on path conditions or reactions that need to be taken? No? Fine, so, um, we've assigned councillors to the, to monitor the footpaths, and I have a proposal.
I've proposed, if you like.
Thank you. Councillor Coppins is seconded. All those in favour? Thank you. Moving on to notice forms. I've currently. Thank you, councillor Brosard.
I'll keep the Alsmore ones, I visit them all once a week. I'll keep the Alsmore ones, I visit them all once a week.
Okay, that's brilliant, we've got you already down there.
Do nine A first, palm.
There are numbers one, two, three and four.
Back again to nine A.
Do the half hour group.
No.